This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 PM on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous Peoples. We will not be able to livestream tonight's meeting, but it is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel at youtube.com/isd535, following completion of the meeting. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/simply. Present at this meeting are School Board members Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Acting Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you Chair Nathan. Director Barlow?
Here.
Director Cook?
Here.
Treasurer Garcia?
Here.
Clerk McLaughlin?
Here.
Director Marvin. Chair Nathan?
Here.
And Vice Chair Workman?
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1, Approval of the Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
We have approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda has been approved. A note to the Board and community, if we're still meeting around 7 o'clock, we will decide whether or not we're going to take a recess at that time. Item 3.1, Comments to the Board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the Board. Members of the community who want to make comments to the Board must email the Assistant School Board Clerk by 5 o'clock PM on Monday before a regular meeting. The purpose of comments to the Board is to give community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the School Board about issues that fall within our authority. The Board and Superintendent do not respond directly to the Speaker's comments during the meeting, but may follow up with the Speaker if requested and appropriate. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the Board. These ensure privacy protections for students and staff, and prohibit comments that are threatening, profane, lewd, vulgar, obscene, harassing, abusive, or constitute a personal attack on others. Speakers, when your name is called, please come to the table, choose a microphone to speak in, and be seated. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed on the screens in the room. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. If you have written materials for the Board, please provide them to the Assistant School The next item on our agenda is 4.1, Nita M. Lowie, 21st Century Community Learning Cohort 9 Grant. This is an information item. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you Chair Nathan and Board members. I want to ask our Executive Director of Community Education and Partnerships, Amy Ike, to come up. As many of you are probably aware, the 21st Century Learning Centers actually goes back to when talking about the 21st century was kind of new. They originated in the Clinton Administration, at a time when expanding federal support for after-school was very, very innovative. They have persisted for decades, but the funding stream has gotten increasingly competitive. And this most recent round in Minnesota was intensely competitive because the total pool of resources was much smaller. And so when Amy told me that we were going to join with community partners to submit a proposal that was as ambitious as past proposals, I said, well, you know, we're going to be competing for the same-sized piece of a much smaller pie. And I think it is a credit to Amy and all of those who are, many of whom are here, that helped us secure these resources at the quality of the ideas and partnerships that produced this grant to Rochester, which I know there are a lot of other superintendents wishing that they were going to have their boards approve this tonight. And so, great job to everybody, and thanks to Amy.
Thank you Dr. Pecel. School Board members, I'd like to invite a group of our partners to join us. We can just face the board up here. Usually when you get this big a group, it's students doing something, but this work is on behalf of students. Well, it's my pleasure to introduce you to many of the partners who will be involved in providing out-of-school-time opportunities for youth in our community. And for the first time, nearly half of the grant amount actually goes out into the community. This is what's called Cohort 9, so this is a three-year federal grant that is distributed through the states, as Dr. Pecel said, through a competitive process. So individuals come together, create a plan based on what our community needs. We also base much of our work on the deeper learning work that is coming forward in our strategic plan in the district. And you can see on your slide, a number of groups will be offering out-of-school-time centers, they're called, so places for students to go, to focus on academics and enrichment and literacy for their families. And then we also have a number of service partners. Those are groups that are joining in the work of the grant, but maybe doing that at an existing center at another organization. And so if it's okay with you, I'd like to just have them introduce themselves to you so that you know who's in front of you tonight.
Troy Priggy, Mayo High School Principal, Go Spartans.
Chris Fogarty, Willow Creek Principal.
Levi Lundack, Dakota Middle School Principal.
From John Adams Middle School, Donna Brunskill Center Director.
Noah Shore, Cradle to Career.
Mustafa Sharif, Rochester International Youth Organization Director.
Twanda Burks, Elosina.
Chad Campbell, Boys and Girls Club of Rochester.
Fajma Ahmed, Pomodja Women.
Ramon, Director of Somali American Social Service Association, Rochester.
Good evening. Christina Lemmer, Rochester YMCA.
Rob Flune, 21st Century Grant Coordinator, working with the district and community head.
Phil Hartman, Senator Director at Willow Creek.
I'm Adam Hare, Senator Director at Kellogg.
Thank you all, and thank you for giving us some time tonight to let the Board see what an expansive partnership this is. This really creates opportunities for access for our young people to these learning opportunities that extend the school day, whether that be after-school, evening, weekend, summer, all of the above. This is a three-year grant. You can see on the slide the total dollar amount per year for three years with, there is a possible extension beyond that point if we do a good job. So, any questions from the Board for any of our partners or myself?
Director Cook?
Well, I guess I just wanted to share that this is extremely exciting. I understand it's innovative from the district side, so, you know, very well done, just echoing the superintendent's accolades there on the innovative proposal, but also to the community organizations for stepping up and partnering with RPS to find ways to provide opportunities for our students, for our kids, for our youth, and enable that, the awesome opportunities that they're going to have. Thank you for your partnership.
Director Barlow?
And what I'd like to do, in addition to say thank you to each of you, also say, please let us know when maybe you're, when we can be of assistance to you, and when we can celebrate with you and the students you serve, so we can show our support and affirm the uniqueness that each one of the students you will serve, what they represent. Thank you.
And I'm just pleased to see so many of the community partners that I know have been doing great work in our community, bringing the magic that you do to our students. So many familiar faces here, I'm so glad. I'm so proud of Amy and her team for bringing this opportunity to the district, and I have confidence about what's going to happen after year three. Let's hope so.
Any else Board members? Superintendent? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Item 4.2 is a recognition of National Arts and Education Week. Tonight, we recognize next week as Arts and Education Week. Arts education comprising a rich array of disciplines, including dance, media arts, music, theater, visual arts, and more, is an essential element of a complete education for all students and supports academic success across the curriculum. We have all been inspired and moved by the performances and artwork that bloomed from the personal expression, imagination, and creativity of students in our community. And most of us in this room have personally experienced how arts education supports the social and emotional well-being of Rochester students, as art education allows them to develop self-awareness, self-confidence, self-management, and perseverance, social awareness, and relationship skills. We thank all of our arts educators in Rochester Public Schools, who through arts education guide their students to develop lifelong skills in critical thinking and problem-solving, discipline and collaboration, alternative ways to communicate and express their feelings and ideas, and cross-cultural understanding. We encourage everyone to continue to celebrate the arts throughout the year by attending a concert, play, or musical theater performance, or art show or display at an RPS public school. Item 4.3, Board Member Committee Updates. Does any Board member have updates to share from committees or any other?
I have one. The Rochester Public School Foundation will be hosting a bingo night tomorrow evening at LTS Brewing, and everyone's invited to attend.
Great. And a few of us today were able to join Governor Walz and Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Education, Willie Jett at Franklin, and Montessori at Franklin, where we saw some rather hefty portions of chicken nuggets served to our students by the Governor and the Commissioner. I think the kids' eyes were as big as saucers when they saw how many chicken nuggets were on their plates. But we are celebrating the legislation that allowed us to provide breakfast and lunch free of charge, and there were some great, excited students there, and it was a wonderful opportunity and honor to have the Governor here to highlight not just the free lunch program, but the work that we're doing in Rochester. Kathy? Yes.
I'd like to add just a little bit to that. Having retired in 2010, I have not ever lost my heart for education, and that was really apparent with the Governor here today. The first thing he did was to bend down and greet the students who were leading us into the building and shake their hands, and it was just absolutely heartwarming, so I wanted to share that.
Our next items, 5.1 through 5.7, are consent agenda items. Would any Board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Yes, I'd like to remove item 5.2 and 5.3.
Right. Item 5.2 and 5.3 are being removed for separate consideration. Is there a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda? Some move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda except for items 5.2 and 5.3. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved, and we will now take up item 5.2, Approval of Change Order for Generator at John Marshall High School. Director Cook?
Yes. I guess my question on this is, first, why do we need a generator at John Marshall High School, and why do we need to replace this one? From the information provided, I was just hoping to get some additional details on, I guess, both of those high-level points.
Superintendent?
Mr. Carlson? I'm pleased to ask John Carlson, Chief Administrative Officer, who just got off a plane and is coming back into town, but who is better positioned than I am to give a high-level response to that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So I would say we do not have a generator at every school building, nor do I think that we are required to have one. But as you would probably understand, that our schools are like small communities, and when there is not electricity, it is very disruptive. In some cases, we'd probably consider canceling school if it happened for a significant amount of time during a school day. John Marshall also happens to be the building where we run our backup data center, so it is powering our networks and backup servers and such throughout the year, so we want to make sure that it's always up and running with electricity there.
And as far as the generator that is there now, what is the basis for understanding that we need to replace it?
So, I got these questions ahead of time on Sunday while I was on vacation, so I have not had the appropriate time to fully get to the bottom of exactly why we want to do it, other than I'm being told by our competent facilities people and our construction manager who's running the project for us, that it is in need of either being rebuilt or replaced. I think there was a question there about how old this particular generator is, and Bill, who is our construction supervisor or manager on staff, has worked here for 25 and a half years, and he was trying to read the nameplate and serial numbers and could not, you know, it's been weathered so long that he could not get to the bottom of exactly how old. But it's more than 25 years since he has never worked on replacing it or doing any significant work to it.
Is the generator, is the backup generator something that is used in a given year? Is that, or how often, if ever, is it needed?
I would say we are fortunate to have a very reliable electric grid in Rochester, thanks to our partners at Rochester Public Utilities, but I would say that it would be common, that it would probably run one to four times in a given year. We also are running them on a cycle to test them, to make sure that they will power on when they need to, because when the power goes out, we don't have time to troubleshoot and test, so they are running tests on a certain schedule to make sure that they actually will turn on when they need to.
Any other questions, Board members?
Is the, sorry, is the testing indicating that the generator is unsatisfactory, or is it really just the age according to our facilities professionals?
I do not have a specific answer for that. I think it's more than age. I don't think that we're in the habit of replacing things just because of a certain number, but I do believe it's been determined that it would be more reliable to spend a little bit of money right now to get that taken care of.
And how urgent is the need for this replacement? Is this something that is important to approve today versus?
No, we would, this is planned, we need to get in the queue, because there is a significant amount of lead time these days, which I've heard is as much as one year, but the plan for this is to be replaced next summer, in the final summer of the JM Construction Project, so we're just trying to get in line so that we have about nine months of lead time in this. So if it was two more weeks, it wouldn't be a problem.
I actually would like to disagree, Director Cook. This is, we have superb facilities professionals in Rochester Public Schools, and I have no reason to question this recommendation or I wouldn't have made it. I appreciate the desire to get down into the details, but as I know you know, there are many, many other items on the consent agenda that could be deserving of similar levels of scrutiny, and I think that this is a recommendation that I'm absolutely confident we can stand behind. Should the Board choose to defer it, obviously that's your prerogative, it's not something I would recommend.
Director Workman?
Yes, I was just going to ask, I think I know the answer to this. If we were to wait until after all of the indoor air quality act repairs or whatever was done next year, I'm assuming it would cost more to replace the generator at that time. I'm not going to ask you for specific numbers to how much more, but...
That would be my understanding. This was bid out two years ago, it was $122,000, and now it was bid out, it's $198,000, and that's because of the materials and labor and just everything going up in price.
And as I understand the request tonight, this is the request for the expenditure, and then, like you said, there's a nine-to-one-year lead time to actually physically get it.
Right, so this is going to go in sometime next summer or early fall, but likely in the summer timeframe, as they're wrapping up the construction work.
Any other questions? Hearing, none. Is there a motion to approve item 5.2, Approval of Change Order for Generator at John Marshall High School?
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The item has been approved. Right, the next item for separate consideration is 5.3, Nita M. Lowie, 21st Century Community Learning Centers Cohort 9 Grant. Board members, do you have questions? Director Cook?
Oh, yes, I did have a question about this one. So the, this very exciting proposal that includes direct funding to several community partners, I was hoping to have some information on how the roughly $400,000 would be distributed, that is paid to the community partners, and whether that would stay the same over time, or if there would be any variation over the next three years.
Superintendent?
Thank you. Chair Nathan, I'd like to ask Amy Ike to share that information.
Thank you. I did bring that along, thank you for the heads-up about your question. So when we first began discussions of this grant, each partner made a proposal about what they wanted to do under the course of the grant. And so they looked at their own needs, their student needs, all of that, and then made a proposal for the amount of money that they would need to be able to reach those goals, if you will. And then we put that together with our needs at the four middle schools and Mayo High School to come up with the total amount. So I'll just read out, these are annual amounts, and assuming everyone spent every dollar that they had asked for, these amounts would stay the same across the grant. We do have the opportunity in years two and three to do carryover, so if something is underspent, then that can go back in with MDE's approval, we can make proposals on how to spend that carryover. So oftentimes, our partners will end up with additional funds if they have something else they would like to do that aligns with the grant, and there is carryover money to get there. So, under the grant, Boys and Girls Club has proposed $150,000 to open up the Longfellow After-School Site, Rio Rochester International Youth Organization, $60,000 to contribute to their center, Somali American Social Service Association, $60,000, Sports Mentorship Academy requested $30,000 for their gym at the Old Gauge East, Pomodja Women requested $25,000 to do their programming at their center, and then our service providers, Cradle to Career, $33,400, they help us quite a bit with evaluation and data, the YMCA, $40,000, they're doing some youth development programming within our centers, Rochester Public Library, Rochester Reading Champions, $8,000, and Elosina with Twanda Burks, $30,000 for financial literacy education programming.
Very exciting programming, thank you.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve item 5.3, Nita M. Lowie, 21st Century Community Learning Centers Cohort 9 Grant?
Some move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve item 5.3. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 5.3 has been approved. Item 6.1 is our focus topic. It's a DISC update on our Family Empowerment PK, right?
Yeah.
Parent Institute for Quality Education. Superintendent Pecel?
Thank you. And as Will Ruffin II, our Executive Director of Equity and Engagement, Jennifer Smith-Lee-Craig, coordinates our family engagement work, come on up. And actually, Michelle Severson, who is really doing double duty and is now working on this program, so is also joining them. Board members received an extensive overview before the new school year began on our family engagement strategy broadly defined, and how we are approaching that work in a systematic way in a limited number of our schools, and using a framework called the Dual Capacity Framework that grows out of a lot of research on effective family engagement. One piece of that strategy that I'm particularly excited about is a program that I've worked with directly in previous school districts and previous jobs, and that is a program that was born in California decades ago called the Parent Institute for Quality Education, which is shortened to PK, P-I-Q-E. It's a curriculum that we have licensed here in Rochester, three-quarters paid for by our federal recovery funding, and one-quarter paid for total curriculum cost, I'll just say, because I know Board members may ask, $100,000 with rights in perpetuity for as long as we use the program. I will say that as a fraction of what some of the curricula we're going to be purchasing on literacy will entail. But I don't mean to go to the money yet, but I wanted that, since I know obviously financial issues loom large in everybody's minds, just to explain that. This is really a program that equips parents with understandings about the ways to support their children in school, the way to advocate for them, and the way that school works, especially for some of our families who either may be new to American education, or for whom school itself was not a particularly positive experience. There's one video that I asked Will and Jennifer and Michelle to show of a parent who has completed the program, and I asked to show that because if you listen to what she's speaking for both her and her husband, if you listen to what she says, there is so much in this parent's testimonial that I think so many educators will be so glad to hear parents being equipped with, who may not necessarily bring this into their support for our students. And so I'm grateful that hopefully we can get the technology working and we can hear that. It's not glitzy, it's not marketing, it's a testimonial from someone who has done the program, so thank you. We're excited about the launch of this program. It's really more than a pilot, but at the same time, it's not district-wide implementation out of the gate. We want to try it, we want to refine it. We want to try it, we want to refine it, we want to make sure it's meeting parents' needs. We still have some fundamental decisions to make about how the program will be rolled out in Rochester. When I worked with Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Brooklyn Center schools, we delivered the program in culturally-specific groups. So you had it sometimes in a language other than English, sometimes in an affinity group of parents from a similar background. That's an important question that we'll be facing in Rochester, is that the same approach? But I think it's a great way to begin the school year, because we know that the parents and other caregivers who sent us their children last week didn't send us the ones they'd like to get rid of and keep the good ones at home. They sent them, they sent us our treasures, their treasures, and it is an incredible honor for us to educate and help those young people develop. And I think this is an exciting extension of our family engagement work. So thank you, and let's dig in.
Dr. Pecquell and school board members just want to say thank you for this opportunity. Dr. Pecquell gave such a good overview, I think we can just go sit back now.
No. It takes, you have to say things like seven, eight times.
I tried. We'll use this time to reintroduce Michelle Severson as an official member of the Equity and Engagement Department. Michelle has graciously, graciously accepted the position of Parent Empowerment Specialist, and she will be leading up this work alongside of Jennifer. So I think we'll get started with that.
That sounds great. All right, well, thank you to Will and Michelle for collaborating on this work, and to all of you for inviting us to present. Last spring, as part of a thorough presentation on family engagement, we shared this graphic of the Dual Capacity Building Framework for Family-School Partnerships, which is now guiding our RPS vision for family engagement. And we are currently really immersed in this work of launching the initiatives that are really focused on building the capacity of both our educators and our families in order for them to partner effectively together for student success and school improvement. So over the past few months, several RPS school sites identified family engagement as a high-priority skip goal for the school year. And at these pilot sites, we're launching family engagement initiatives that include building the capacity of our educators by delivering professional development in the Dual Capacity Building Framework, and by identifying and supporting a family engagement liaison to serve at that site. So it's a staff member who's designated with that role. We're also implementing measures and data analytics, expanding implementation of the Talking Points Communication Platform. And what we're here to talk with you about this evening is launching family empowerment, which is specifically in the form of PK, Parent Institute for Quality Education.
And as we introduce PK, I just want to point out their mission statement. I know we can all read it, but there's a couple words that I want to point out, because it emers well with our strategic plan and the vision that we have for our students here in Rochester. Those words are engages, empowers, and transform families. That's what we're trying to do. We want to make sure those families and caregivers have the knowledge and skills that are needed to make sure that their student can achieve academic success. With that, that's going to set up the video that we talked, that Dr. Pecquell introduced. And like you said, I want you to try to imagine an RPS parent giving a similar testimony after going through this program.
Good evening, parent teachers and graduating class, Rochester Hills PK Program. My name is Lonnie Gonzalez. My husband and Artudo and I both work full-time and try our best to maintain a work-life balance. We have two daughters, Olivia and Annette, ages eight and six. They're in second grade and kindergarten respectively. This is our first time taking the PK course. We enrolled in this class because we believe a good education is important for our kids' future. Since we've been attending this class, we have been more focused on reassessing this importance with our children. We have a better understanding about the integral roles, family, school, and community play in our girls' education. How we participate and get involved in each one of these areas has a direct impact on our children's schools' progress and development. We've started reviewing and discussing homework more thoroughly. We've had more candid conversations about why they want, what they want to do when they grow up, and what steps they need to take to accomplish this goal. We've also had more communication with their teachers regarding their academic progress. Our family has had our share of obstacles over the years. My husband is a kidney transplant recipient, and I'm his paired exchange kidney donor. We've been able to teach our children that even with faced with unforeseen challenges, to never give up, always try our best, and be open and willing to try new things. As working parents with many financial obligations, increasing costs of college, of a college education can be worrisome. We're reminded that if we start a college fund now and regularly contribute to it, it will become a good habit that will have a positive impact in our children's future. Through PK, we've been, we've also learned about various financial resources that can pay, that can help us pay for college. There are many scholarships, grants, and loans provided through the state, federal, and private institutions. If our children perform well in school, earn a high GPA, meet the AG requirements, and achieve high scores on their SATs and other tests, these programs become more readily available. I'm hopeful more parents can learn about the PK program early and take full advantage of what this course has to offer. I want to thank everyone, the principal, Ms. Carranza, Ms. Hernandez, and all the different guests, sorry, I don't have their names in front of me, but thank...
I think we can stop there. I just want to also add that, it's like a bittersweet moment for me. I, I attended this training about 16 or so years ago, when I was a minority liaison at John Marshall High School with Tim Lindberg, and I was sold back then. And I was just appointed that it never happened in Rochester. So that's the bitter part. The sweet part for me is that we're now in a position to correct something that should have been corrected a long time ago. So I'm happy to be in a position where we can finally bring a program for our families and caregivers to Rochester that would make a difference in the lives of their children. So that's the, that's the happy part.
Well, and before we go on to Michelle's part, which will be in just a moment, just to touch upon that video and the highlights of PK. We edited that video in, out of respect for your time, but it's noteworthy as well that it continues on in Spanish, which demonstrates PK's commitment to really elevating families' home language and cultures, and that's something that we didn't show you here for the sake of time, but it is noteworthy, I think, as well. And just to talk about what the programming looks like, what the opportunity looks like. Lonnie Gonzalez was part of a virtual pandemic cohort, but typically, the PK model is an eight-week curriculum, and it's delivered in elementary, middle, and high school levels onsite at the children's schools, and cohorts of parents go through this together, this eight weeks of the sessions. And the parents and caregivers are personally invited by staff, by PTA, by members of the community, so they get this personal invitation to participate. And then, the sessions themselves are facilitated by, you know, culturally-responsive facilitators, transportation is provided if it's needed, childcare, meals, interpreters, translation, if that's relevant. So it's really trying to increase access and opportunities for our families to participate in that programming. So with that, we have Michelle Severson, who has enthusiastically been diving into all of this work, and she's going to share some things about the curriculum.
I really am excited about this, because it gives parents a language to talk to their children about. From the day that those parents hand over their treasures to Rochester Public Schools to the day that, that Rochester Public Schools hands them their diploma, and that's the goal. And so it really sets in place a 12-year conversation with your children. Instead of, when my, I think it was fourth grade, when my children surpassed my ability to help them do their math problems. When a parent doesn't feel that they're able to help their child in other areas, this gives the basis for a conversation for that long-term goal, and, and keeping the eye on the prize, which is that child's academic success, in order to live the life of their dreams. So that's really what the curriculum is all about, relationship and goal-setting, and then strategies to achieve those things. I think we'll just move on to the elementary curriculum topics. You can read this, it's like, I get so excited about this, so I want you to be able to see everything that's on the screen. I know that you are all good at reading your homework, but I wanted to talk about specifically the elementary curriculum topics, because there's a huge focus on that social-emotional learning. And so, so it's great to set our children up to learn their ABCs, and count to 10, and 20, and 100, and do some basic math. Those are great skills that they're going to learn along the way, but the most important skills are those self-regulation skills. How do I feel about myself? How do I learn to, to integrate myself into a world where people are different than me, and still remain important and valuable and, and live my dreams, right? So the elementary curriculum really, really does a good job in setting up that social-emotional learning and space for a child to travel through their education with confidence, supported by those that love them the most. And all the curriculum levels align and support Rochester Public Schools' strategic plan. That was also a real, a really fun thing for me to see, as they were bringing in the curriculum topics, having had the great opportunity to work on the strategic plan with all of the departments. It reminded me how Amy and this group of individuals who will be working with our students have, have another network or, or layer that we can connect these families to. Not only can the students develop, but their parents can develop side-by-side with them, and have similar language to speak. I just think, again, that, that sets elementary families up for long-range strategic planning for their child's success. And then going into the middle school curriculum, it really talks a lot about the developmental changes. Now, in my personal experience, and I'm trying not to speak on behalf of all children, but some of the middle school children I have interacted with have a lot of the same skills as, as my three-year-old granddaughter, right? Social-emotional skills. It's a scary time going off into those big buildings with large numbers of students, and so I think the basis of social-emotional learning, and then understanding the developmental changes that those middle schoolers are experiencing in that environment, acknowledging it, having the families there to support those changes, really sets those students up for success. And again, preparing for post-secondary pathways, aligning with that strategic plan, you know, we've got members in this district working hard to create all kinds of opportunities for kids. There were programs that Rochester Public Schools offers to our students currently that I didn't even know about. I've been connected to this district for 20 years, I can't imagine how great it would be if all middle school parents understood what those options are and how to access them. And I think also preparing to meet university admission requirements. I remember when my oldest daughter started thinking about those things. I was the first in my line to attend college, and I honestly didn't have the skills to help her with where she wanted to go. So she did a lot of it herself, and I felt inadequate as a parent to be able to help my child develop that pathway. This would have been a great tool for me to walk side-by-side, instead of standing behind her as she was talking to the professionals who could help her. I'm so excited about that. And then the high school curriculum, for me, was really important because it, it specifies and helps parents understand Rochester Public Schools' individual graduation requirements, and also kind of what the requirements of the state are should they leave our district. But it's important to know that Rochester has really high standards for their students. This is a great place to get, get an education, and to help parents understand what those opportunities are is just a wonderful way to help our students be successful for their future. Again, discussing those post-secondary pathway options within and beyond Rochester Public Schools. The curriculum also helps to prepare to meet university admission requirements, understanding and empowers, empowering students to reach their dreams, isn't that what education is really all about? Again, identifying financial aid options, not just the standard, but all those other little pots of money that are out there for kids who do certain things, right? And then continuing collaboration among homeschool and community, just allowing parents to stay in the conversation with the children about their success in public education and years beyond.
All right, so this one, we just wanted to brag a little bit about the program that we are getting our students and families involved in. As you can see on the left, over 750,000 families have gone through this program since 1987. That's a large number of families. Dr. Pecquell mentioned it started off in California, but the program has expanded into 14 other states, so 15 total across the country, which is great. And then if you look at the bottom two pieces of data, this is, this goes with what Michelle was talking about. So when PK did a survey of the parents' understanding of what a GPA is, it was about 33%. And after going through the program, you can see that has risen to over 80%. So that's a huge increase, just in that one area. Same thing on the right side, where it has families understanding the five points about what, what has helped their student to attend a university. Same thing, started at 29%, and increased to over 80% after that. So this is definitely something that we can bring to Rochester, and something that will have a direct impact on our students and families.
And regarding that quantitative data, it is also good for us to keep in mind that PK will support us with data collection for five and a half years, and provide quarterly summary reports of the data for each cohort of parents. So we will have that partnering with, with that data as well. And in addition to that quantitative data that Will shared, PK also indicates some additional potential outcomes for parents and caregivers. And some of those include really families taking pride in their home language and traditions, getting a newfound understanding of educational pathways, a lot of support for literacy and family awareness of the importance of literacy, informed advocacy for students, feeling a sense of belonging in the school community, and pursuits of deeper learning for the entire family.
So just kind of winding down here, what are some of the next steps? So where are we in this process? As you can see at the, the top part, this is where we're just starting to study the PK curriculum and adapting that to Rochester Public Schools. So what does that mean for us and our students and families? There is an orientation and a training that we will attend later on this month. After we come back from the training, it's time to start digging in, and truly start to, starting to map out that curriculum for our students, not just something that's happening in California, but how do we adapt that to the students' needs right here in Minnesota? We'd have to start naming those facilitators, like Jennifer mentioned, that would be in all of our schools, connecting with our interpreters, and start figuring out what childcare would look like, and how are we going to plan meals and things like that. So that's when the work will really begin, once we return. As far as the setup, we're going to try to start with four elementary schools, one middle school, one high school, and also our native families. I think that's important to include them as well. We're not sure if our number is lofty or not until we go through the training and see, because we want to make sure that we can give the schools the right amount of time that's needed for this to be successful, and not just, not just do it because we want to check a box. Sometime in March or April, we want to invite you all to come and see what the program is looking like, and maybe talk to some of the parents and get some of their experiences firsthand. And then, something that, I don't know if we mentioned it or not, but PK will also help us collect the data for five years. I think that's really good. Now that we have a research and assessment department, thanks to Dr. Pecquell, we can better partner and turn around and use that data and make adjustments on the fly, right? So I think that's important. And then lastly, we wanted to just make sure that we expand the program to our other sites, and then also started to dig into some of those culturally-relevant cohorts, like Dr. Pecquell mentioned as well. So then starting to offer cohorts in Spanish, start to offer cohorts in Somali, so that we can really truly dig into the members of our community. So that's where we are, and we're going to ask if you have any questions for us at this point.
Superintendent?
I will be brief. Having worked with this program pretty extensively, there is a graduation at the end. If you can make it through a PK graduation without getting choked up, you're not human. It's so moving. And invariably, the parents say many things. They tell stories about connecting with... They tell stories about connecting with their kids in different ways. But they say in different ways, "Nobody ever told me this stuff. Nobody explained this to me." And you sit there and it comes from people in very different life experiences still saying, "I feel like I've been given sort of a code book to understand this system." And so just wanted to add that little piece of personal experience that those, they always have at least three parents speak at the graduation. And PK kind of really helps you map this out. And we got to the point in St. Paul where we were, and Dr. Obama was there too. We had them, the parents were in gowns and caps, and they loved it. And they were taking pictures with their kids of their graduation. And so it was very exciting.
Dr. Garcia.
I have a couple of comments and questions. I am very excited about this. I wish that this had been something that we could have used in the district that I grew up in. A couple of technical questions. So if I have a child in elementary, middle, and high school, do I only do one eight-week curriculum or do I have to do 24 weeks of this?
That's a good question. I'm in a similar situation, right? Because I have students in multiple levels. And I think between my wife and I, we would have the conversation on what matters the most at this point in time in our lives. So if it were me to this day, I would choose the high school part because that's new to us. We've gone through elementary, we kind of know what that's about. We've gone through middle school. So I would suggest each family has that conversation and decides what's best for them at their point in their life.
So if they were to choose middle school because that's newer to them, could they also then do high school later? Okay.
Absolutely. But it's their choice. We're not making anyone do 24 weeks.
I would choose that just because I love school. And one of the other things too, I was wondering, so I love that we do elementary, but I think maybe perhaps too as a board, what we often find is there are early education versions of this, that we can do this before they even get into school. So they're just hit the ground running. You're smiling. So that's a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
There is pre-K curriculum available through PK, which is kind of fun. However, our initiative starts at elementary and moves us through, at least through this private program. I think there's a lot of things we're going to learn in this first year about what else, what's next. But if I may, I do want to thank you as board members and the superintendent for doing your work because the first thing I was tasked to do is to take all of these great ideas and these educational targets for California and lay them over Minnesota's requirements and what we provide for our students. And because all of your policies and procedures were up to date, I was able to give them so much information. And so it's really exciting that the curriculum that we're going to have is current and specific to Minnesota's students and their experience here. So already, the collaboration between and among others on behalf of our kids has begun, and that's so exciting.
Okay, two more comments. I'll make it quick. So I think a lot of times for the board, and I don't want to speak for everyone, but we get emails from a parent that says, "This thing happened in a classroom, and I didn't appreciate that." And I always sort of, I cringe when that happens because the thing that we're inevitably going to do is say, "Go to the teacher." This is the sort of the chain of command, right, that you need to respond to. But sometimes it feels dismissive. They're looking for another person to help them figure out or navigate the problem. And so I feel like this will be helpful to us as a board in being able to navigate, how can we sort of hand them off, like do a warm handoff in some other way rather than just saying, "Well, here is our org chart, and this is who you're actually supposed to be talking to." Because I also do want to know the things that are happening in a classroom that maybe they're concerned about that we wouldn't necessarily see because we're not in all of the classrooms. And the second thing is, I hope that we really lean into, I know Jennifer, you were mentioning some of the barrier reduction about there's going to be childcare, there's going to be food there. Because my automatic reaction to seeing eight weeks was like, my mom would never have been able to do this. And, you know, she was a single parent and her only language was English, and that would have been like just untenable to her. So I feel like this is so much more accessible. And if other people can sort of recognize that this, like, we're bringing you in, we've got transportation for you, because I think transportation, we often hear, is one of the largest barriers to being able to participate in any of our programs. I think that would be so incredibly helpful. I love this. So thank you.
I just want to point out a couple of things. I think as the parents or caregivers are going through this program, one of the consequences I would say is they can have a better relationship with the people in their schools. So initially, maybe I would be hesitant to talk to that teacher or reach out to that principal, but because of this, now I might. So I think that's one part. I think the other part that I will add is, this is a dual-capacity framework. So at the same time, while we're working on our parents and caregivers, we're also going to work with our staff and say, "These are some of the things that we're hearing." Figure out how we can improve on our end. So it's not just about the families. It's also about how can we improve as a district.
I have a comment.
Dr. McColl.
In listening to that parent speak as well, it almost seemed like, in addition to what you're saying, Mr. Ruffin, a better relationship between the parent and the child as well. That they can connect about things that are going on with the child every day. And I think that that can only be a positive thing.
Director Cook.
Yeah, I guess I am also very excited about this program. I mean, I think what it says to me and what I hope it says to the community is that in Rochester Public Schools, we are serious about parents' voices. We're so serious that we don't wait for them to come to us. We're going to help you find your voice so that you can be effective in advocating for your student and partnering with your school community. And I think this is going to be really impactful, and I'm very excited about this work. So thank you so much, and I will definitely be excited to participate in the session in March. Thanks.
Director Ruck.
One quick question. A lot of emphasis on the post-secondary. I was curious about the career-ready component, any consideration regarding that? While it is very important, as we all know, that those who aspire to go to college know all the ins and outs, what about the career-ready option?
I would say that this is one initiative of the many initiatives that we have in Rochester Public Schools. We do have, excuse me, initiative for post-secondary pathways. That Heather Hogan is leading. But I think the real question is, we want all of our students to be prepared if they choose to go to college. And some people do change their mind. We may not go right away, but then maybe in a year or two, I do want to go to college. We want to make sure that our students are prepared in case they decide to go that route. We do have other pathways for them in a different initiative. But in this one, we're just going to focus on making sure all of our students are prepared in case they choose to do so.
Sure, thank you. And one additional. So the qualitative data collection, just curious, will the system talk to whatever current data systems we currently have, or will they be independent of each other? How will we know that we're truly comparing apples to apples?
Yeah, we're going to definitely lean heavily on Dr. Ruck and his guidance on that one. So we will have more insight on that after we go through the training mid-September, and then we can have a better answer for you.
Thank you.
Director Ruck.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm also really excited about this work, and I can't wait until March and April so I can, you know, observe and maybe participate as well. What I see this doing is really removing barriers and creating opportunities for our students and our parents as we all work together to help them navigate the system. You know, even as a teacher, there were things I had no clue about, you know, what the parent piece of it was, and I didn't know. And I'm, you know, reasonably well-educated, but there just wasn't the access. So I can't imagine that people who come in with some really strong barriers to any of this, it would just make it so much worse. And starting in an early age like this, you know, it's just, you know, I can't wait till 12 years from now when we can see what happens.
So I'm wondering if you could say a little bit about how PK sees the future role of those parents who complete the training and what might be in store for them?
Sure. So the graduates of PK are often, of course, empowered to be leaders of education in their own families, oftentimes in their school environments, and also encouraged to be leaders in future PK cohorts. So a lot of times, those graduates are encouraged to consider becoming future facilitators, either at their school or in the community. And so it becomes a parent-led, parent-facilitated program so that it doesn't feel as if there is a hierarchy of school staff who is leading this program, that it really becomes empowering in that regard. And of course, a lot of graduates going on to have leadership roles in the community because of that, I guess, that inspiration that they have from the experience as well.
Because this is a curriculum, and it really is based on a train-the-trainer model, I do think that those graduates are going to become active members in PTA, right? Or some of the other after-school activities that we're going to have. And so those parents tell other parents. And so I just want to put a plug in because my next charge when we get back from California is to find trainers to help lead this work. And I want to put the invitation out to anyone who loves our children and cares about their success. You are welcome to become a parent trainer. Your friends are welcome to become parent trainers. And friends of your friends are welcome to become parent trainers in the PK program initiative with Rochester Public Schools.
I'm going to try not to say too much, but I could say a lot about this because I've been waiting for this maybe as long as Mr. Ruffin has. But a number of years ago, my colleague who used to sit in this chair, Deborah Seelinger, and I brought a grant through the PTA to Rochester called the Urban Family Engagement Network. And we brought people together from the community, and it was exactly around a program like this, of bringing parent workshops. And entirely volunteer, and Deborah and I call it our Getting in Trouble Together side gig that we've been doing for a number of years. We've been working with Head Start, we've worked with some of the schools, we've worked with some of the PTAs. And we've always said, "We can't do this. We just can't do this, the two of us." But every single thing that we have been hoping for and waiting for and looking for, not just the curriculum components, but the recognition of the wraparound services, the childcare and the transportation and the dinners and the languages and the middle school and high school component. You know, we recognize in our parent groups that middle school and high school just becomes a chasm for parents and parent involvement, and they feel so disassociated. And this is a huge bridge for them. I think it's trite to say that successful parents build a village. This is going to get these parents that are a village to support their kids and our community's kids. I can't be more excited about this. I can't be more excited about the team who's working on it. We're so glad to have Michelle back. And I'm going to start recruiting some trainers for you.
I think one final point I'll make is that, at least in Minnesota, the districts, because I was a part of bringing it to Minnesota back in the days Will was mentioning it, the districts that have adopted this have actually created their own name. And it's something I've encouraged the team to think about because you do adapt, as Michelle was explaining, the curriculum to your local context. So it's not plopping California, too. So in Minneapolis, where we started, it was called Connecting Parents to Educational Opportunities, or Sapeo. So that was, they didn't know PK, they knew Sapeo. And in St. Paul, it was the Parent Academy. And in Brooklyn Park, it was Parents of Power, or POP. And so I would encourage us to be thinking of our own name as you go off to the training next week. PK is memorable, it's good, but something that I think kind of has that Rochester flavor. And if anybody has any brainstorms, I think that would be an exciting thing to brand it a little bit in our own.
In my brain, it comes as like, "PK, like spicy." So that's what I think every time we hear.
Yeah. It is, so there you go. That's great. Thank you.
Well, it's no A, B, C, D, or D, I, S, C.
No. Yeah, you keep me away from that. I will not be involved in this naming. We do not need more acronyms in this district.
Before we let you go, which schools is this going to be piloted on? Do we know that?
Yep.
We do. We're beginning with Gage and our Native Families Group at Gage, and then looking at Franklin and Montessori at Franklin, Willow Creek Middle School, Mayo High School, and kind of also planning on Riverside and Elton Hills. And the reason that we're just a little bit tentative when saying that is because we've been advised by PK a little bit to just make sure that we consider our capacity and to roll it out with intentionality and with integrity and to make sure that we can do it well instead of doing all of it really quickly. So that's what we have as kind of our initial launch. And then, of course, expand exponentially from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is our annual board calendar. Are there any items a board member would like to bring forward for consideration on a future school board meeting agenda? Hearing none. Under Board Questions and Responses, there were no questions submitted by board members prior to the meeting. We have some upcoming board meeting dates. September 12th at 5:00 is a study session, September 19th at 5:30 is a regular meeting, October 3rd at 5:30 is a regular meeting, and October 10th at 5:00 is a study session. The next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute's Section 13D-05 subdivision 3A, which allows the board to go into closed session to discuss ongoing labor negotiations. After completion of the closed session held in the superintendent's conference room here in the Edison Building, this regular meeting will reconvene. Pursuant to the law I have cited, will someone make a motion to go into closed session?
Some move, second.
It has been moved and seconded to go into closed session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The board moves into closed session at 6:57 PM.
The board is back in session at 7:22 PM. Clerk McLaughlin, will you please read the list of the people present in the closed session?
We had Chair Nathan, Vice Chair Workman, Mr. Bakken, Director Cook, Treasurer Garcia, Mr. Carlson, Dr. Bacall, Director Barlow, and myself, Clerk McLaughlin.